Personnel issues and evaluation. Item on our agenda is a pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice in all. Alrighty, next item on the agenda is public comments and agenda review. Do we have anyone for a public comment? I don't know if I do want to. Oh, I'm so sorry. We had to do a public hearing, but people were expected to be there. They thought we're going to do a public comment. I am a parent.
I've got one of the students request.
Yeah, alright. We will, we'll talk about that in a minute. I'm sorry. We need to open a public hearing, a very short public hearing, which I just remember. And can I have a motion to just recess our meeting and then go into a review?
I move we recess our meeting at seven oh six and go through a public hearing.
Okay, do you have a second? I have a second. Eric?
Yes.
Jess, Katrina, Kyle, and Debbie, yes. Okay, we need to have a public hearing to accept the funds from the Aquatic Resource Mitigation and enter into an agreement with New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services. This is the money that we will be receiving for, to repair the grant of the dam. So I'm going to read what, do you know what you need to say?
Would you like me to start with the motion?
Yeah, we're gonna start with the motion so we can get going.
Okay, so I move that we enter into an agreement with the Aquatic Resource Mitigation ARM Fund Grant Agreement with the New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services for the Kenneth Hill Pond Dam Decommissioning and Restoration Project.
Okay, we have a second. Second discussion. I'm gonna also open this up for any discussion with the public right now. About this?
You're amended to also include the process.
What would you do?
You want to do a second?
Do we have any discussion with the public? Okay, board, any discussions about this or process? No? Okay. With that, we will vote on the first part of the motion. Alright, Katrina?
Yeah.
Eric?
Yes.
Jess? Kyle?
Yes.
And Debbie, yes. Alright, we need another motion to authorize our superintendent, Rob Seaward, to execute any documents which may be necessary for the contract. So he will, he will sign the contract for us if we authorize him to the motion.
So I author, I move that we authorize Superintendent Seaward to execute any documents which may be necessary for this contract.
Okay, second, pro, second discussion. Okay, alrighty. Eric?
Yes.
Jess, yeah, Katrina, Kyle, and Debbie, yes. Alrighty, so I'm going to right now, sign a certification of vote of authorization. And that states that we voted to accept the funds and enter into a contract with DES to receive the ARM grant funds. And we've also voted to allow our superintendent to execute the documents for this contract. You want me to sign this right now?
Before you sign that, should I, should I motion to authorize you to sign that? Cause I, I mentioned it.
Okay, I'm good.
Okay.
Alright, I'm just saying what just happened.
And then secondly, you have to witness your assignment. You can authorize it later, but you have to witness it now.
Okay. Alright, I just signed it.
Pass that along to our notary.
Alrighty, so we're going to leave the public hearing. So can I have a motion to leave the public hearing, please?
I move we close this public hearing at seven oh nine.
Okay, second. Eric?
Yes.
Jess, yeah, Katrina?
Yeah.
Yes.
And Debbie, yes. I said it was gonna be a ten minute. Okay, so we're back into our regular meeting. Thank you, everyone. That was just a formality we had to go through. Alright, so I will open public comments. Does anyone have a public comment? No? Okay, agenda review, anything?
Just that I'll have some others.
Okay, so the first item on our agenda, we have a presentation by two Co Brown students. I know one, Sadie. And who is our other guest with you, Sadie? So Stella, do you guys wanna come up?
Yeah, where was Stella?
Why don't you come up? So you wanna stay like in here? I'd like you to be on camera so people at home can see you. Thanks, Bob.
So if you'd like to, just, just up.
Yeah, that's perfect. Alright. This is Sadie's group and Stella.
Here.
Harrison, okay, from Co Brown. Would you like to tell us?
Sure. So I just wanted to open by stating that Co Brown is a very great school or is very diverse and includes a lot of different opportunities and access for students. Such as, for example, there are a lot of different level classes. We have special education classes, general classes, college prep, and then the highest, which is ATE, which is placement. There are also a lot of resources for extra help. There are our links to online tutoring, things like that.
I just wanted to talk about the sports. Overall, they're very personable. Every coach wants to be there every day. And I didn't say myself, I'm in the girls soccer team. It's something that started actually at the school up here that I really wanted to go to Co Brown and be able to, you know, be present on the team. And their community is just so open. You have so many people to go to. And it's not just a team, you know, like for the rest of the season or rest of your school year, you have those family members to go to. And it's just a big community that you just, you want to wake up for every day.
Alright, yes, real size. What career do you have?
How would you?
Any other, do you have?
Um, well, we also have a lot of clubs and sports. We don't have football, but we have pretty much every other sport imaginable. We have a bowling team. We have a swimming team. Yep, fast fishing. You know, obvious like volleyball and basketball. We have a hockey team. The hockey team and swimming team don't play at the school. We go to like somewhere else. I actually don't know exactly where, but it's not at the school. Plus a lot of other sports. There are like a lot of clubs. There are, there's like some categories. There's honor societies, which are classes, which can really do it on resumes, things like that. There is the writing center, which can also give you benefits in college because a lot of colleges have writing centers, which is just like, you know, helping kids write essays and revise some things and stuff like that. And just a lot of other like creative outlets that you might not buy at other schools.
So Stella, the writing center, that you actually have students that are helping other students, right?
Yeah. You can apply as a sophomore. Freshmen can't do it because they're underclassmen. It's just other classmates who are helping other classmates or people integrate. But yeah, it's really great. It also gets you, it's the only thing that you can do in school for certain hours. So it's also a good opportunity.
Any other questions for the students from Co Brown?
I know you're a few years removed, but from being in Stafford and going to Co Brown, is there anything that would have helped you transition better from Stafford's school to Co Brown?
Um, hundred percent. I could say I was always in hard extra help classes. I struggled a lot to read. And something that was really hard to transition into Co Brown was homework. I was not prepared to work as hard as I did. And I think that when you go in there, you really just put on the, like, I really needed to do this for myself. And that was not the situation here because I felt like it was just fun. You know? And you learn things, but I just wish I was prepared for that for sure.
Um, I think also definitely, as you were saying, the homework load is definitely different. Classes you have, classes are longer each day as well. So, you know, you have like, you have so much information coming at you each day, which you get used to over time, but it is a really big jump.
Long sports as well. It's like two hours, two hours, actually it's two and a half of practice for the first month of your season. On top of your first month of the year that you're going to. So that can be really challenging. And I was frustrated with it once.
Long day, cause your day starts earlier.
The freshman summer was a little short.
Especially that first year.
You finished eighth grade, and two seconds later you were starting ninth grade.
Whoa, you feel really old today.
And then the basketball players, they play all during vacation. And they have.
You said homework, and we've heard that from quite a few Co Brown students. And we're trying to address that. It's a challenge because a lot of folks here feel the homework load is too great. So I was trying to find that balance to not overwhelm the current students, but at the same time have a little better prepared for high school. Other than that, was there anything else that stood out to you that was significant? Like, I guess what I'm looking for is the thing that makes it most challenging to transition from your eighth grade to ninth grade here. Like, what was that thing that?
Maybe, maybe you were expected to do so much more. Yeah, but you know, our first, our freshman advisory class, we were told that we wanted to be treated as young adults. And for us, you know, we just came out of Stafford and said, are we all adults now? So that was really challenging. I'd say that was probably hard, you know, that expectation, you have people above you. The writing center did help so much. You could go with them with anything. But yeah, I think.
We talked about technology a little bit, is that a question as well to go from here? But I don't think any computers is a little bit different.
I definitely, yes. So I don't think it's your requirement anymore, but our freshman year, computer literacy was in maybe more class. And that really kind of got us oriented into like office style appliances and things like that. We wanted to use Word and Excel and a lot of things that we weren't exposed to here at Stafford. Like, I was used to like Google Docs and Google. But in the real world, that's not, you know, was primarily used. So computer literacy was definitely really helpful. It also just taught us like basic skills, you know, on the internet and things like that. And it did help because, you know, in science classes, when you need Excel for like math equations and graphs and things like that, it definitely helped with those sorts of things. Technology also helped with that.
So other than your core classes, are you taking any extracurricular classes?
Um, that's like classes like.
Not required for grad school.
Right, right. Like the art classes were.
It's not arts required.
Yeah, so I did take woodwork. I'm taking nutrition, childhood development is coming this next year. Sports unit one and two, because I'm hoping to go into radiology after high school. And I've actually been put up with all the classes I need to exercise science. Anatomy of physiology, chem, all of these classes I don't need to take. But it's for my career and that's what they allow.
Um, I'm taking a lot of extracurriculars. I'm doing, I have been doing art classes since my freshman year and also music classes. And the opportunities there are really great. You know, the art classes, there's like a ceramics room, lots of materials. There's opportunities to submit things to competitions, so you get like national awards. And also like art classes in the beginning I took just taught you like the elements of mental art and then you could, you know, integrate that into your pieces later on throughout the years. Uh, the music program is also really great. I think that's a big thing that stands out for Co Brown is the music program because it's just, it's an actual class, like for school. It's not like, it wouldn't just be like outside of school. And there's just like the teacher, Mr. Ludwig there, he's great. He works with the students. There's like personalized lessons. There's a lot of stuff outside of school you can do, like there's a jazz band and there's a pep band where we play basketball games. And also there are like trips every year. This year we went to Boston, last year we went to Florida. And it's just really great. It gets kids out there.
Are there any, I guess, if you could think of extracurricular things that you wish had been here during your time that maybe would have then like transitioned you over into Co Brown? Like maybe like after school activities? I mean, obviously if you play sports, that takes a whole lot of time, but if there's any. Ever since COVID, it's like things have, after, after school clubs and activities kind of stopped and then it's like trying to get them, the interest going again for them.
Yeah, I'd say going into Co Brown, there was a Bible club. And I was like amused. I was like, are you kidding me? You know, I now run it. And that is something that has opened up so many opportunities, given so many kids a role. Just the overall like, it's slowly growing. The numbers have doubled since my freshman year and that was something I'd never seen before. You know, you'd see, you know, my mom would be like, oh, can you let teachers be Christian? You can talk to them, you can trust them. And I'd be like, well, where's our group? You know, like where can we have someone to run something for us? Can we have that?
Oh, you two are wonderful. This is really, aren't you?
No, it's great to have you.
Thank you both so much for coming in. You know, I think you're like your mother. You're like a. Another Kim, so alright. Thank you both and maybe we'll see you again.
Yeah, of course.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Do you guys want to?
Alrighty, so next we have Bob Stevens, our engineer, here to present the proposal. And we need to get done, just to get us through with the application, right? You're gonna print it? Okay. Okay, there you go.
I'm sorry.
No, you're not an idiot. You're not an idiot. Okay. Bob, you wanna just walk us through it?
There's not, um. There's, there's not a lot to the proposal. We were informed in a conference call that the state is working on an agreement between you all and the, the folks at ARM. And that agreement needs to go through a review process at the Republican Party Corps of Engineers because they're, they're the real owners of all this money. So what we propose to do since the award has not been given yet is just, uh, we propose $7,000 to answer questions, attend meetings, and to help the state on your behalf, complete this agreement and fill in the information that needs to be in such a schedule and budgets and those types of things.
And this will all be reimbursed by the grant, correct?
Yes, yep.
So as soon as it's approved, we can put in the invoice with $7,000 and it will be reimbursed, okay?
Yes, and it's really, it's, $7,000 is a lot. We have no idea how much it's going to be. We're just going to answer questions as they come along. It could be less. Well, we're, we put it there so that the district does not have to commit to a huge sum of money for the grant. Very much what I understand.
And that was something we were concerned about. We had this conversation with the, the art people, I think it was two weeks ago. And we talked about some of the things that they, the engineers may be helping them with to complete this contract, to submit to the executive council and the governor for approval. And so the engineers might need to work with them a little bit. But knowing that we didn't want too much work done until we were assured we were getting the money, it still needs to have the approval. So I think that amount was, seems reasonable. Nobody else has questions about it?
Do you want to look at it?
Alright, if you can see it, maybe we should see it. Bob has been doing some of his work.
I don't know.
Don't worry about it.
Keep talking, you'll just take me a second.
Does anybody have any other questions about the process? You know what we could do a little bit while we're waiting for this? Do you want to talk a little bit about our meeting yesterday with the executive counselor? Was it John Stevens?
Steven, not even.
Steven. And then he also had two other men with him that were engineers. They asked us a lot of very good questions to understand the project. They came up with a strategy to talk to the other executive counselors because they need to have three votes. And we know we have John's vote, he's supporting this project. But what they talked about is if you all remember, remember we learned about the Mohawk River? It, this would, this flows to the Isaac glass and keeps going to Cochico and so forth. So they apparently, like the seacoast, like Dover, they have a problem with, I think what they were saying, Cochico being very polluted, right? That's what they, one gentleman was saying.
I'm really careful not to say that kinds of things. But it's a, the issue was the, um, I think it's going to prove and some of the waters are used for water supply.
Yes, yeah. So it would be, this, this water would be flowing, this unpolluted water they talked about, from the sources that we have in the dam. And would actually be sort of diluting. What did he say?
Well, they were saying solutions, the solution.
Solutions, the solutions, the pollution, yeah. The pollution, they're using that. So they're going to talk about that, like how this would actually help their communities by supporting this project. So it was a good strategy. What else we can talk about as far as, what else did we learn yesterday?
Uh, the great side of it, I know. And so the, the steps are to go through the council and then the governor would be designing. And the council, counselor Steven was very enthusiastic about the benefits of this project to the area and to the state. And very excited that this project in this district is getting launched.
One of the other things that the counselor did say to us is he is going, wants to be CC'd of communication with DES so that they can move this along faster and maybe get it to the executive council.
So it wasn't cleared earlier, the meeting that we had with DES when they encouraged the district about the award, saying that they've been selected and has now been moved through the process. Is that the schedule is such that they need to submit or get this agreement before the governor's council, I think, in March. And the award will actually take place in June or July. So that's what this is intended to do, is cover any consultation with us that you might need between now and then without spending. Just call in or get a loan money before you have it.
Like you said, it's not as needed.
That's right.
But it would exceed the $7,000?
That's right. Not without your approval. I think this is our second or third amendment to our agreement. This is by far the second. You bet it's worth these before some.
And this does not, you're not expected to complete the design with the 60% design until after we receive the grant, correct?
That's right, yeah.
And that, all of that is included in the grant so that we will be reimbursed?
Uh, there was a shortfall of $13,000.
Yes.
Everybody can go back to the fact. But this is out right now. I think you are all aware of it, but this is a, this is a home run.
Yeah.
This is a really exciting news.
Does anybody have any questions for?
I don't think so. I'm happy to answer them. I'll be sure to put the agreement off of our site under the fourth.
So we know that it will not exceed $6,900 unless we have, we approve that. And it may be less depending on how much consultation DES will need from you in order to complete the, the information for the contract and then submit whatever they need to the executive council.
Yes. The idea here is we're gonna, we just need to be responsive to you all. And they're gonna come to you and we've offered to help them prepare this agreement because they would admit that they have a staffing shortage at the state. So we offer to help, help draft an agreement that helps move things along. But certainly we can fill in the information that populates that. It's a couple of.
Right.
Schedule and budgets and all the information of the project. And we're happy to do that. It's whatever you ask us to do. And if you ask us to do something that's going to take more than the $1,690, we will help you discuss it and you can decide if you want to wait till after the grant comes or if you wanna broaden the scope of view of this.
So and in order to have the Army Corps of Engineers approve the project and all the permitting, that would be after the, have the approval from the executive council and the governor approved it. And then you would have to finish the design.
Correct.
Okay, and then it's submitted to your Army Corps of Engineers and somebody else for the wetlands?
Well, DES Wetland, it's gonna review it.
Okay.
But I'll give you an example. So sometime between now and March, but probably after that, we're not certain. We need to meet or have, or discuss with the next tradition game about this turtle nesting habitat. And, you know, if they say, well, let's go out there right now, it's happening now. Let's look around and see what's going on. We can do that. This enables us to do that. But the, the, the. The bulk of the work we'll have, and of course after the grant comes, you'll remember our agreement again and then we'll be able to spend money that you have from the grant.
Right. And just for clarity for people listening, and I think everybody understands this, the grant is more, we don't get the money upfront, we have to invoice and then we're reimbursed. So as we go, we receive the funds.
That's a good distinction. So it's access to.
Right.
That's important.
And it's not expiring, right? There's also, you know, some funds or grants that are expiring.
That's a great question. So it does expire or can expire, but we've also been told that they are amenable often to a one-year extension. And with just strong justification, we can offer a one-year extension. We've been anticipating this will be finished in 2026, but the way it's looking right now with the process and as possible, it could extend over to 2027. And they are aware of that, I think they're finding a way. They don't want to put so much pressure on the project that it ends the goals.
And do you remember Bob, I know they suggested that $18,000 gap, they suggested a couple of grants that we should look into, do you remember what they were?
I don't offhand, I talk about these things all the time in multiple states, and I but I do know we have a list, yeah, so I do bring this.
Okay, they felt pretty sure that we would be able to get funding for this all now from another grant. Anyway, anybody else have any questions? No, okay, so would someone like to make a motion to approve proposal that we received, that we all read on the screen, for the $6,900 for any consultation that's needed to be done by Stevens and Associates to complete the agreement, so that needs to be submitted to the executive council and not to exceed without further permission. And that would be reimbursed, we could invoice what we are approved to the, for the grant to reimburse.
I move, we entered into the agreement with Stevens Associates as was presented on screen for the purpose, for the sum of up to $6,900 for the purpose of the things that come up in the process while we're waiting for the grant funds to come in, noting that they will be reimbursed by the grant as it becomes available.
Great, give a second, discussion. So just, just to clarify, what we just did earlier with public hearing was we agreed to enter into this agreement. So now, this is the step that they needed to start the process, so then Bob and this organization will then help them as needed. Thank you, alrighty. Katrina, Eric, Jess, Kyle, and Debbie, yes. Thank you so much Bob, thanks for seeing us again.
You are.
Okay.
I'm happy to.
Okay, take care.
You too.
Okay, alrighty, I want to make a, we have these motions for, because I think we have somebody here waiting for you. So let's get moving with.
Last one left.
Yeah, okay. We have a couple of motions and some things we discussed in public regarding students. Do you want to, to rename the student in public services parent this year?
That's different, apparently, normally we.
Can we name the child, can we name their child? Yeah, okay, so Camden, can we make a motion for Camden?
Yep, so I move that we authorize a student Camden Reeves to attend Dover High School next year. At a cost of tuition up to the amount that we pay Co Brown, and then transportation will be provided by the parents.
Wait a second, I'm a second, okay, discussion. So this is definitely, we have to go through the process and Dover has to accept the student. So as long as Dover accepts the student, then we are all set.
Okay.
Okay, alright, so Eric?
Yes.
Jess? Katrina?
Yeah.
Kyle?
Yes.
And Debbie, yes.
I'll call the superintendent's office tomorrow and let them know that the approvals happened, and I'll send them a copy of the approval.
Okay. Is there anything else I need to do?
You should, you should reach out and touch base with them, because you're going to have to register your child in Dover. I'm just not sure what the timeline for that is.
Okay, yeah.
They've been talking for a while about having an application process, but I don't believe they still do. So I think it's just really contacting them, filling out some registration materials, and we should be all set.
Thank you. Thank you guys.
Thank you very much. Good luck.
Thank you.
Okay, we have one other student, I wouldn't name the name for this one, it's real information.
This one's, this one's just permission, right?
Yes, but I would, I would just say the student.
Correct, right, right. So I move that we authorize the student, as discussed, to do non-public to participate in Co Brown's sports extracurricular activities for the spring 2025 season.
Okay, wait a second, a second, discussion. So this student is a homeschooled student, and Co Brown has asked us to make sure the student lives in town and all that. So that is why we just did what we did. Co Brown's. Correct, okay, alright, Katrina? Eric?
Yes.
Jess? Kyle?
Yes.
And Debbie, yes.
That is just. That's what you just said.
Alrighty, now let's go to approval of school board minutes, both public and non-public. Eight of our packets. These were very well done, yes, to think. Want to start there? Yes. Okay, do we have a motion?
I move we approve the public and non-public meeting minutes from the January 22 school board meeting.
You have a second, okay, discussion. Just keep getting better and better. Yeah. I like this format where you're trying to say the outline.
I'm trying to remember what sparked the movement in random, but so under page four, like education committee.
Oh, you saw that?
Yeah, it's not. It's like a separate, like it was in education committee.
Right. I don't know.
It's obviously just I. I have to go back and watch the video.
You did talk about the agenda.
I, I remember talking about these items, it's just, I don't remember what sparked it, but it wasn't related to education committee.
Right.
Because like we just didn't have a meeting, so I don't want it to.
You were recording this at the.
Yeah, just, it might just need to be a long bullet after the committee dates or.
Right.
It must have been a sidebar.
It was a separate, yeah, it was a separate, maybe under other or something. I remember you saying those things, but it had nothing to do with the education committee.
Correct, I said it wants to be logged and stuff.
Right. Okay, good, alrighty, so Eric?
Yes.
Jess? Yes, Katrina? Yes, Kyle?
Yes.
And Debbie, yes. Good with that, thank you. Director of Student Services, Melissa.
So as to give you some information about what is, what is sometimes called catastrophic aid to help special education aid. And it's from an RSA in the state, which looks to provide some assistance to school districts for students who have exceptional costs. And so there are two ways that it does this. So if a student's cost is three and a half times the estimated per pupil cost, then the district pays for that first amount, that three and a half times cost. And so to give you an idea, this year they estimate that to be $75,319. So the district is responsible for that. Anything above that amount, they are supposed to reimburse by hard say 80%. And so we submit, so the cost this year will be submitted in July, next, this is 2025. And then it will be reimbursed usually in December of that year. Just keep going, so it's a reimbursement after the fact. And so it's usually in fiscal year. So I think the question was, you know, simple, this year, the DOE sent out a notice that they couldn't do that 80%. And so there was some concern around that. So this year it was at 67.5%. So if you look at the chart, you'll see that the previous year it was 85%, 98.3, and 4.6. But if you keep going back, if I go back to 2018, it was at 70%. If I go back to 2017, it says 68%. So it's not like we haven't spent here before, just where the state has set aside enough money for the amount of expense that a student has, where a district has endured because of the exceptional cost of a student. So one would have anticipated that this would be a challenging year, because we went from the definition of a student's special needs to end at 21, to ending at 22. So there are, there were a lot of students that weren't anticipated, and a lot of those students were in residential or high expensive programs. So you know, kind of could have been predicted that this would be a challenging year for the state to come up. In addition, if the student's costs are 10 times that count, so the student reaches the cost of being over $215,199.10. Then the district is responsible for that amount up to 75, hopefully comes up. The state is supposed to pick up the 80% between the $75,000 roughly and the $215,000, the $215,000. And then after that, the state is supposed to pick up 100%. So that typically is kids who are in residential schools. So that's kind of what special ed catastrophic aid is. Before I go any further, any questions about what it is in general?
I guess what it was brought up in our last meeting at our budget hearing, the question of, is, did this in any way impact the increase in our budget, the current, the budget that we're presenting to the town? Did the decrease in the catastrophic aid cause any of the increase in the cost?
So we. So for this fiscal year, the difference of that 40, so the $40,899.90 that we received this year, yes, we would have received a little bit more, because we were paid an 87% of the $80% or higher. So I could do the math for that.
It's like 12% difference, 12.5% difference, so you know.
But it doesn't affect.
$6,000.
Yep, $6,000, you're right, correct. But it doesn't affect the budget we proposed, that's where the difference is, essentially, okay. And so what I can say is that the, so a student really has to be in services from a lot of the year in order for us to get, get really to that $75,000. And there typically add a district placement, so it's pretty hard, given what's considered a powerful cost, for a student in district to reach that gap. Because we can't count, like, we can't do a probation of the teacher, because he would have had to hire a new student. We can't do like a probation of electricity or any of those kinds of things, that an added district placement might consider and create in tuition. So we're really talking added district placement. And so you really have to have a student here for that entire 12 months where it's going to get close to that. And so we had situations last year, and we'll have situations going forward, where a student might be here for eight of those months, or nine of those months. So you might get close, but you have to get completely over before it takes in at all. And we have more students that we're anticipating applying for, for this coming year than last year. I would just.
So I just want to make sure I understand this, is it the, the decrease was due to the increase of age? That the amount of money that they had budgeted and, and the extra here that would be, that they would be eligible for? If it should be, I can't say that it's. I don't think I can. But it's, it would be hard to say it didn't. So it's a 6,000, so we're looking at, if we look at 2024, that decrease was a $6,000 difference. So really, if we're looking at big thinking for our budget now, that's, it's like almost a $400,000 increase, right? So it's not really. Yeah.
I remember doing that before. This doesn't really affect our budget, just the reimbursement. So from a budget standpoint.
Right, right.
Is it in as expected revenue, when it's all.
It just becomes part of it, but this, this is unanticipated revenues.
Okay, so it's unanticipated, it's not.
We don't know what we're going to do a year in advance. So what we're budgeting right now for money that we have no idea what's going to actually come in. So really, you're thinking about this as like it comes in the year after, you budget it. So when that question was asked at the meeting, the immediate reaction was, we have no idea. We're budgeting a year ahead of when we're going to get that money, so it's going to affect next year's budget. Yeah, it's not budget, it's just it's money that's in the account. So at the end of the year, when I say, hey, we've got $200,000 left over, $40,000 of that, $203,000, what's the cost of that?
But it's also, when you look at 2024, the reimbursement of $40,000 at 67.5%. That's only a 12.5% difference of what we had received, the 87% from the year before, which is equal $6,000. So it wasn't a huge impact. No, and you can see.
Number one.
Submitted or reimbursed it. Right.
We get more money back from food service than we do from that.
Okay.
So it's a difference.
Yeah, and could you give me the numbers again, because you gave, you went down 2021, but then you, you different numbers.
Sure, so in 2019, it was 94.5. In 2018, it was 70.2. In 2017, it was 68.6. I mean, if I'm honest, I was impressed that at some point, I knew that it was $200,000.
Right, we know that, that's like, if you, long term, that's, that's not historically what it happened.
That's one thing else we're paying for everybody's food. Also, it was a, it was a year of giving, that is.
Oh, right, you're right, 2021, yes.
It's not going to happen again.
Yes, I, I, now you know why that was so bad, right, yeah. Great, does anybody have any other questions, does this clarify?
Yeah, no, it's good information to house that if we get the same question, the district, which one, the usual result will be there. But it's just good for all of us, we actually, if people are asking.
She's looking forward to going to the microphone.
I do have one question, I don't want to speak in the area that you shouldn't, but are you allowed to speak of how many students are out of the district? I figure that's about the extent of the thing, or is that to identify?
Small number.
It's such a small number.
Okay.
And so I feel like that's a question that might come up, and I understand that.
Yeah, you could say if it's increased from last year, so that, that could be maybe why the cost has increased. More of just.
Right.
We want to avoid identifying, but we can definitely talk numbers all you want. Like we can say, you know, it went up $35,000 or $100,000, whatever it might be, due to student demand. But we wouldn't want to talk about if it was three students or five students, it's such a small number. Large districts, they can, they can, say 67 students, it'd be hard for us to figure out who they are.
Okay, and the, the amount is really what you're reimbursed for anyway, you see you're reimbursed for. So the, the more expenses are, the more.
You see you're reimbursing for, so the, the more expenses are, the more... Thank you. Great, good? Yeah. Okay, thank you, Melissa. I'm not separate. I know you're over. So I think we're good. That's all.
Well, he's, he has to stay here. He has to, he's on us.
But this is pretty easy to number out.
Okay. All right, thank you very much, Rob, for doing that. All righty, where are we? Let's go back to, oh, okay.
Page fifteen.
Sorry.
Page fifteen.
Page fifteen, oh, we're going right to your report.
That's what I said.
Okay, okay, let's go to Rob's report. The benefit review, did any of you review it?
Yeah, I've already, I've already signed in, Jess is reviewing.
Any questions? Nope, good, all right. All righty, Rob, what else?
All right, so we have some new hires. Welcome to that.
I have to...
Oh, that I could do.
Well, I have a copy to give you.
All right, so we had two new hires. The first one is Greg Sullivan. Greg was one of a couple of applicants that met with a couple of interviewees, or interviewers, I should say, to discuss the facilities and ground maintenance position. He, at the end of the day, was our top choice, and we're looking forward to folks for approval. He will be working eight hours a day, forty hours a week, for two hundred and sixty days a year. He'll have the, you see the second vacation and all that sort of stuff down there. His pay is at twenty-four dollars an hour, and he would be receiving twenty-six pays. Obviously, that's pro-rated for the remainder of this year, but next year continues with the... You have any questions? I'd love to answer them.
Just, just one, is this technically replacing somebody because we, it, we kind of created, created a new position? We changed the job description?
I think I was, what I put it on there was so that down the road, if anybody was like, what part of the budget and stuff like that, that you'd be able to realize that it's not a new position. You're taking the money from that line and you're...
Gotcha.
You're right, it is technically a new position, but it's replacing a position.
Okay.
You want me to adjust that in some way?
I'm, I'm good with it.
Okay.
Uh, so I move, we accept the nomination of Greg Sullivan for the position of facilities and ground maintenance with an effective date of two seventeen twenty-five. This is a full-time position. Eight hours a day, two hundred and sixty days a year, with benefits as presented on the nomination form here, with a salary of twenty-four dollars per hour to be from the local operating budget.
Okay, we have a second discussion. So, so we discussed, he has the background to do basic maintenance and repairs, and he is relatively local, so if there's an emergency situation or he lost power or whatever, he'd be able to get here.
I, I participated in the interview and as a member of the facilities committee, I'm aware of what we're, what we're looking for. I was, I was pleased with the applicant.
That's wonderful. Anybody else have any questions? Okay, Eric?
Yes.
Jess, Katrina, Kyle, Debbie, yes? Good.
Not that one. While she's signing that one, Greg, we're going to move on to Samuel Harrison. Samuel is applied for a full-time paraprofessional position. Had an excellent interview and has excellent references. Looking to hire Samuel at seven hours a day, thirty-five hours a week, hundred eighty-two year. Obviously, pro-rated for the remainder of this year. He is H Q T, which is lovely, but he'll be on stuff one, and he had seventeen twelve an hour of local operating budget.
Is that if he, if he likes to make a motion?
I just want to, the, on the details of benefits, the boxes are not checked for what benefits are available on the nomination form.
They are on mine. Personal action for him?
Yeah. I don't have one.
I think...
Maybe they could let out, they're on here, on mine.
It looks like they're vacation days and holidays.
They don't get vacation or holidays.
Okay.
This is paraprofessional.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah. So the, the person will have access to help, dental, long-term disability, F S A.
Okay.
They get...
They do not get...
Not, not the four oh three B?
They, they, they can, that's an optional.
Okay.
I don't, we probably should remove that box because that's nothing we provide. That's something that they opt to do.
Gotcha, okay. So I move, we accept the nomination of Samuel Harrington for the full-time paraprofessional position, effective two twelve twenty-five. He's a new hire. Benefits as outlined on the nomination form here. At a rate of seventeen twelve per hour from a local operating budget.
Can we have a second discussion? Okay, I know that you worked at a local camp that my students made. Everything new, that's great. Okay, Eric?
Yes.
Jess?
Yep.
Katrina?
Yep.
Kyle?
Yes.
Debbie, yes?
While she's signing that, I can move on to facility use. We have, oh, we'll use your phone to that. That's my, I'll make it work. That is shit, it's over. Already cut it. Worst thing to that. All right, so we have several here from the rec. We have a youth basketball practice, February tenth to twenty-first, five P M to eight P M. Um... You don't have one, okay. Okay, that's fine. Uh, let's see, the second one is Stratford Rec as well, is the Cupcake Challenge, March twenty-second, from ten A M to twelve P M. The third one is the Father Daughter Dance, April eleventh, twenty twenty-five, six to nine P M. The fourth one is, also, all these are Stratford Rec. Mother-son night out, May ninth, from six to nine P M. And last but not least, the youth open gym soccer basketball. They have March twenty-first to April twenty-fifth on Friday, from six P M to eight P M. We noticed that we did note that they cannot have it on April fourth, that night the gym is being used. So they're aware of that. We just needed to make sure you write that. So it says not...
Oh, he said it comes through the...
Oh, I honestly did not talk sharp on my head. I was just told that they could not have it that night.
But the other nights were available, the other nights.
Yeah. So when we get these now, because we don't have the previous system where April receives them, she then works with Jess in the main office, as well as the deans of students, to identify if there's any conflicts. Once she clears those conflicts, and that's where that one was noted, that it's not available that night, she then gives them to me, I then add them to the package for you.
Okay, do we have a motion?
Yeah, so I move, we accept, or we approve the Stratford Rec as presented in these facility use forms to use our facilities, February tenth to twenty-first, Tuesday and Thursday from five A P M, or, sorry, Monday through Friday, as written for basketball practice. The Cupcake Challenge on March twenty-second, Saturday, from ten to twelve, ten A M to twelve P M. The Father Daughter Dance on Friday, April eleventh, from six to nine P M. The Mother-son Night Up on Friday, May ninth, from six to nine P M. And the Youth Open Gym on Fridays from March twenty-first through April twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five, six to eight P M, excluding April fourth.
Okay, we have a second discussion? Just to know about it. Yes, okay. Okay, Eric?
Yes.
Jess, have Katrina, yes? Kyle?
Yes.
Debbie, yes?
Do you have another facility request, but it was not on the agenda? Do you want me to save it to other?
Why don't we save it? Because that goes along with the correspondence.
I do, I just wanted to know where you wanted it. So I do have another one, but it's right there. All right. Yep, fun statements are in there. Just, it's the most recent statement. We get them pretty much every month from Jean. If you have any questions, I can reach out to her, but for the most part, it's very self-explanatory. Next is the ongoing completed board meeting task list. Any questions there?
I don't, I remember we had talked about the, the A E D box outside. I don't know if that's been completed, or I didn't notice if it had been added to this yet.
I don't see it on there, so I could definitely add it this month. I apologize, it wasn't before. We're waiting till it's a little bit warmer out. We have to go to snowbanks to get to the wall. So when the snow is lightened up, then we will mount the box. We do have a box for it. The A E D can't stay in the box at the height of winter, though. It's too cold outside. And it's not a heated box, it just protects it from the weather.
Gotcha.
So it will be a pre-season A E D. It will be out there, you know, as soon as basically the weather kind of breaks in March.
Yep.
Stay through probably like sometime in November, if you will. But it will cover all the, it will normally be out in the... But I will add that to the list, and it will be something that will be resolved, say, March-ish.
There you go.
Okay, so their enrollment.
You got it, Rob? You got it, yeah?
It's like fifth grade. Fifth grade.
No, it's, uh, sixth.
Oh, is that sixth, I'm sorry.
From forty-four to forty-three. And then we lost the second one at the high school, which you guys already knew about, I talked about that.
Three hundred and sixty-three kids in the school. I can't even tell you that it's, I'm so, I hope compared to...
It was, it was still over four hundred when I started attending meetings in twenty eighteen.
And it was at one point five hundred. Um, yeah. All righty, any other questions about the enrollment report? Okay, so let's move on. Okay, next, correspondence. One, we got that letter already from the... Is this an envelope?
It does not look like it.
Okay. The executive counselor, John Stevens, sent a very nice letter, really acknowledging the project, applauding us for what we've done, the way we've approached this. And by quickly addressing the dam failures, we're protecting the safety of travelers on Route two oh two A, transportation corridor concurrently. I was impressed with you, that your proposal also revitalizes associated wetlands and improving water quality. Most impressive is your developing educational outreach learning trails that will be a benefit to school district children as well as all of the future residents. So he was really very happy to support us. And as I said, he did say he wanted to be C C on all the correspondence with the state so that he would help to get it. So that's awesome. We have Regina Kulein wrote to us, and I think Rob helped her. Regina wrote to the board, and then she got the automatic response. And then she wrote to Rob and asked him about...
The school climate survey as well as...
Oh, of that, yes. Do you want to share how you responded?
So they wanted to, she wanted to find past warrant articles, and I was able to direct her to them. So she was able to, all of our warrant articles are online. Well, we should say all, we still have like the eighty to seventies and sixties. Well, the fifties are on. Because that was all in Little, handwritten book, it was really kind of a book. We still got it from sixty-seventies and eighties ago, but we're getting there. Probably this summer, April, and I will stand there and send you them. So I was able to direct her to that, and that's actually been very helpful for a lot of our community members. A lot of people reach out and say, hey, where do I find the board meeting minutes? Where do I find the A and R report? All that kind of stuff, and we're able to direct them to the website, and they're able to get that stuff without needing to blog, paper, or write down, refining it, copying it, waiting for them to come pick it up or mailing it. So it just, it's been a very big time saver for us, which is great. The second thing, what she wanted to know about the school climate survey that I had run, talked about that we did this little interim one. I don't even share it with you guys. It's got identifying information. We tell people to confidential, feel free to open up, share whatever they want. Some people actually identify who they are, so I don't share those results. What I had said in the last meeting was just that the culture and climate survey was showing definitely a number trend, that people are happier. In particular, they really liked the D and some of the work that's been going on there. A lot of positive comments around behavior management, et cetera. So that's what I was saying, and I explained that to her, and she completely understood. It wasn't...
Culture climate survey, can't remember the timeline. Was that the same one where maybe the, you indicated that there were some struggles around, I think, here, shortages? But that's not the same, I think, that Rob, the contractor there, like, to help solve that problem? I don't remember if it was the same culture climate survey, but I think that that might have been a comment.
We did have a comment about para-professionals and special ed support in general. And what we had talked about was that we were right in the midst of hiring that new case manager, who is absolutely amazing, we love her, glad she's here. And then also that we were trying to fill a number of open para positions. And we're, we're closed, but we still can't get to that hundred percent. We always seem to be short, one, two, three, and that's kind of where we're at. Even with the hiring, this person was still not there yet. April and Marissa do a great job screening applicants and talking to applicants and checking with references. And then Melissa and I, of course, double-checking and checking off the bridge of the view vote. So it's good efforts, but at the same time, we can't seem to like get that one completely checked out.
All right, we also received a couple of emails from Meg Purdon, and she had a great idea about having a listening forum for the community. And I think that's something that we're might want to do maybe in the spring before we have our, before we set up the survey that we sent out and have our board meeting, or maybe before budget hearing?
Before budget. Remember, we had talked about this before.
Yeah.
And we wanted to have it, we had kind of tried it, like, oh, this completely, you're all like, open house meetings. We've struggled with getting community members to come into the building. The past ones that are standalone.
Couple of years ago, there was only like a few board members that showed up to it.
Right.
They canceled it.
Yes. Um, and so, and then we, we, I thought we were doing the open house tonight, and I don't think it quite worked out.
You just said a meet greet.
Yeah, we wanted to be a little more like possible, like, socialization. It didn't quite work around, I think, where we were hoping. So I think that, like, it's something that, like, we wanted to address later.
So if we can, we could talk about this, if we want to do it, like, I know we're going to have our regular workshop this year where we review our goals, and we take the, we'll probably be sending out another survey to, to the community and the teachers will get feedback to see, and that will help us either refine our goals, change our goals, see if we're meeting our goals. And we can think about having something like that then, or in September, before we enter budget season. It's like, you know, we can talk about that.
Yeah, it could be good before. It could be good if we're going to do, sort of like a roundtable, to do it before the board, set their goals that we do in the springtime.
Okay. So, and then the other thing was, maybe was talking about doing something as part for candidacy. We sent this to legal Dean for review because we have to be careful about electioneering. Do you get response from Dean about the electioneering?
In a nutshell, we can't use our building, our technology, any sort of taxpayer-funded resource. We can't use to allow that to be used for any one or even multiple candidates. So in the past, we've had people request, can I do this on your property? Or can I make copies of that? Can we post these signs around your building? And the answer repeatedly is no, no, no. And it's largely because we have to avoid electioneering, which is a law. It's our, say, six fifty-nine forty-four dash A. But also our own policies talk about no electioneering. but also our own policies talk about no electioneering. So Dean, just re-verify what our policy already said and what the law already says, which is that we really can't use these, our, our school building or those types of things for any sort of electioneering purposes.
Okay, I think that was, and the correspondence, lots of missing. Anybody else see anything? Nope. Alrighty.
Facility that goes along with that, though.
It's part of that, I, I think that's.
So, am I replying to it now?
Yes, because the facility was for the candidate to do the candidate's listening thing, and so that's. And I think that's still on the same.
You can also hit all of that.
Do people get that?
This email was to Dean.
Yeah, he received that, and there was also a request for a survey to be sent with contact as this floor for candidacy. And that was also sent to you, and we sent.
Right, because it's the same thing, right? We'd be using technology, our, our taxpayer technology to support our candidate.
And it's not, I think the listening session would be great for it to do in the, like, we just talked about this. Okay, let's move on to community calendar. Community calendar, I was asking if the board would be okay with us sharing the board statement on the dam with the community calendar?
Is it too large? Like, do they, are they, are they up to that?
We did a pretty big one a couple of years ago with our goals and stuff, and I feel like that was, that one was, like, two, four pages. I don't know exactly what this one was. Yeah.
They're usually pretty good. So is everybody okay with that?
Yeah. Because a lot of people in the community that.
So they, these people get it before the district meeting, so that then, you know, all the information about the dam is out there at the district meeting, so we can focus on the budget. Alrighty. Policy committee?
No, we've been waiting to get through.
Alright, facility committee?
We have not had, we have not had a meeting in a while. Did the facility survey?
I haven't heard. Can you give a response to that?
I haven't given it to you yet. If you'd like it, I can definitely forward it on.
Oh, so you did send it out?
Yeah, it's been, it's been posted for questions.
Okay. So at some point soon, we'll schedule a meeting, and then we'll, we'll get back to it.
Food service, no. Education committee? No. Well, this will be in the spring. Transportation committee? No. Athletic committee, we're hoping to meet before February break. Right now, parents and guardians of students who have participated in winter sports, girls' basketball and boys' basketball, should have received an athletic survey. We're hoping that everybody responds. It helps us to, it's confidential. It helps us to improve our program. So that is out there. I think that was sent out for district meeting today.
Just as a take care of it.
We're delegate, we already gave you an update about the dam, right? Next meeting, March 5th. So March 5th, we'll just do our final run-through before our, our district meeting. And then we will also have, did you say we do Boys' Run?
Yes, there's a presentation by Boys' Run, and then there's one for elementary, and I love, that is elementary. There's one for middle school. Oh, the field trip.
Oh, okay.
We recruit tentatively. Now they have to come back and do the final sales.
That's March 5th, too?
That's, yeah, so.
There's a field trip. Presentation that's not required for the field trip.
Yes.
We made, we made it clear, and they wanted to. So if, and if anybody comes and says.
It was just a little hiccup about that one time.
I get it. I was very clear with the dean. I was very clear with the class advisors, and I said, please share all this with their students and parents. There is no requirement that you come. I just need the information to build a good report. They said they would like to.
No, I loved the, I loved what happened.
But people thought that we required it, and we did not require it at all. Alright, other? Any others?
Yes, I do. So you have a quote here from GNS Electric for $4,185. One, and I give you just a tiny bit of background. We have struggled to get heat into the offices over there, so we had this company come out and install two baseboard heaters. You can't use space heaters. They installed two baseboard heaters, so that those two offices would have heat. There is a long-term plan to get the furnace ductwork redone. I actually have a company that's gonna come and look at that and give us a quote for that as well. While they were there, they had to run wire to the baseboard heating. When they ran the wire, they went up into the old head to see if that was the best way to run it, and they found a chunk of wiring that had been eaten by mice. Wires had exposed copper. The outer cover was completely missing on a lot of places. But once again, it looked relatively contained, and so they were coming back to put a junction box in and fix that, that school structure wiring. When they did, and they actually went up into that space and actually were crawling around, they found it's everywhere. Every wire is eaten.
Fire has your.
And so what they are proposing is disconnecting all existing wiring in that building from the panel, so no power will go to that wire. We're not gonna bother spending a lot of money ripping it out of it. What they're gonna do is run new wiring that is coated in metal or inside a conduit, one or the other, or both. But it's on where they're at in the process. And what they'll do is, in the two offices, they'll run in a couple of outlets, and there'll be an outlet in the hallway, and I call it an outlet in the storeroom, because that's where we have all the extra crumblets and things like that that get whipped in. So we have the carts in there. So it's one, two, three, four, five, six sets of outlets. They're all gonna be four box outlets. And then the lights, all the rooms except for the outdoor classroom storeroom and the athletic storeroom will have light fixtures, and all of that will be run off of one circuit. They'll then also rewire an emergency exit and smoke detection and so on and so forth. They'll run wires for that. So basically, what they're gonna do is install those various circuits and get it all connected up, and we'll be able to have power where we need to have it in that building. The lights will be LED at that point as well, so there'll be a long-term cost savings with LED lights versus the very antique ones that are up there right now. And so I'm asking for the board, I don't have to, it's under 5,000, blah, 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 but I really feel like I want you to have an opinion on this, because I really see four options. Option one, take that building off our property. Problem with that, we lose office space, we lose tons of storage space. Option two, turn it into a storage shed, so no power, no lights, no anything. The problem is, once again, it can get quite dark, and we'll lose the office space, and I have no place to put those stuffs. Third option would be to replace it with something else, which is gonna be extremely expensive, and most likely you're looking to bond. The fourth option would be this. We make it useful again by minimally reinstalls and power, and making sure that that power is protected from mice. Just so you know, all the mice have been removed. I don't know what happened. There must have been a time period when that building was kind of.
We used to have food in there, and that was the problem. It was infested, because they were storing food, raisins, and things like that were.
But all the mice have been removed, but this will protect us if they ever return. We'll obviously keep on with trying to make sure that that never happens, but if it did, all the wiring that they put in will be protected.
Okay, do we have the money? Where is this gonna come from?
It's coming from the $60,000 line and the repair line.
Okay, do we want to make a motion to accept this?
Yep, I move we accept this proposal from Gates and Sliz Electric, GNS Electric, for $4,185 for the purpose of performing the wiring repair and outlet and light installation as detailed by Rob in our NS.
Do we have a second? Alright, discussion? I think that analytics is still actually a nice building.
So I, I was in there, I don't remember if it was five years ago when we were talking about the SAU,
Yes.
or if it was a couple of years ago, but I remember going in there and having to crawl around to get.
There was so much.
And it's, like, it's a pretty usable building, from what I see now.
It was, it actually, I, I thought it was in decent condition, and so there's no reason.
Other than this, we don't see anything else. I mean, like I said, the heat system that's in there is not getting the heat where it needs to go, and it's giving spaces that don't need it. It's not part of what we're talking. It's a local person that's gonna go on here and inspect it for us, and to let us know a cost for what it takes. So basically, shut off the rooms that don't need to have heat, and then get heat into the two rooms that do. The electric would then become a backup to that, as opposed to the primary. Right now, it's the primary.
Okay, anybody else?
I think it's a reasonable cost for the.
It's a fire hazard. If we don't do it, we're gonna have a fire, and that building is valuable.
We'll shut the power off, is what it will come to. It's a, it's a big, usable building.
It is a big usable. Alright, Eric?
Yes.
Jess?
Yeah.
Katrina?
Kyle?
Yes.
Debbie, yes? Anything else?
That was my other.
Motion?
Motion.
There's one here. No public comments? Okay, motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Second. Eric?
Yes.
Jess? Yeah. Katrina? Kyle? And Debbie, yes? Thank you.
I'm staying asleep.
I am.
I saw sprinkles today at the yard at Round 1.
I did. It's going to smell again. What's it gonna do tomorrow, Rob? Why don't you give us a heads up?
Wait for the camera to go off.